Call for the regular meeting of Independent School District 695, which is in Minnesota. Danielle, can you do roll call, please?
Randis Sutter, I'm here, Laffey here, Rahab.
Here.
Rice here, Karity Simon.
Here.
Kate, Board Chair Casey.
Here.
And Superintendent Marsup.
Thank you. This time, anybody wishing to address the board with public comment?
Right.
Or?
I have folders for all of you.
Okay.
With information. There's a table of contents that explains everything.
Was it in?
No, unless you're like, oh boy, it looks like there's one folder short.
I'll have to look in chair.
Oh, wow.
Okay, good.
Well, good evening. I just want to start by saying thank you. If no one has told you this today, I just want to say you're all amazing and I just want to say thank you for your support and being our board members. We as a school district were selected one of eight schools statewide for a partnership with the Purvich Center for the Arts. The Purvich Center for the Arts is the governing state agency for all arts education in our great state of Minnesota. The CAP program, which stands for Comprehensive Arts Planning Program, is based upon the belief that dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts are essential components of a basic education. Arts Education for All is the guiding statement for the CAP program. Brede and I are here together to update you on the CAP program. We currently co-chair the CAP committee, and our committee is composed of Chisholm Public School staff who are specialists in their field and Chisholm community members. Our community members have taken a vested interest in bringing our school and community together.
So currently, our community is making a three-year commitment to create this comprehensive arts curriculum, a strategic plan. And we have two deliverables, is what they're called, the important deliverables, that the Purvich Center for the Arts is going to meet the requirements for this. So our first deliverable is February 1st of 2024, and we're going to send our rough draft of our arts program that day, of the plan. And then our CAP plan helps set specific measurable goals and art outcomes for the future for our students, and it will work on building the community and school arts collaboration as well. So when completed, the CAP plan will be presented to you guys, the school board, for adoption. We put together some information inside that packet that we sent, and as we progress through this, you guys can feel sure to reach out to us, email us, call our phones on our classrooms if you have any questions. But we're just really excited to show you this information today, so.
And we just gave you a brief overview of kind of the goals and what is involved in this process of the strategic planning. We've already completed a full workshop date with Purvich Center, so they are partnering with us to go through the process of creating the strategic plan, which is obviously K-12 and comprehensive. So, any questions?
Well, I remember, let's see, 24 years ago, when we wanted to turn this building into an arts school.
Yeah, that was quite, I remember that.
Yeah.
And we tried. And Purvich was behind us and everything, never got off the ground, and there are reasons for it, which I will not go into. But I think this is so valuable, and I applaud you guys, I really do. I think that getting the kids involved in arts, and I don't care what kind of arts it is, I happen to like singing. I can't draw a stick man, so this is fabulous, and I hope that you'll come back and let us know what the progress is, but I applaud this, this is absolutely wonderful.
When, yeah, when we do the rough draft and submit that, we probably will just share that with you.
Yeah.
And then also we'll come before you in the spring to get it voted on. And you're welcome, we put the business or our meeting dates through January.
Yeah.
You're welcome to come and sit in on our meetings if you'd like. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Great idea.
Yeah.
One more question.
One question. How do you present this program to the students, to the kids, to the community?
Well, we have students on our committee, former students, and that are just recently graduated, and so they're part of that, they're part of the planning of what they want arts programming to look like, K through 12. And so it's not necessarily a, it's not, it's for the students, but it's really a strategic plan for our school district, so that we are, you know, meeting all of the vast standards of practice in arts education.
So I would say we're showing students as that curriculum is then being on the road in the future.
Yeah, in their classroom and in their, and what we provide in terms of programming too for them as well.
That's what I was going to ask, if you're going to think about putting this into the curriculum as we move forward here.
So this is a comprehensive, focused on curriculum.
Right.
It's also professional development, it's also, you know, making sure that we have equitable access. And it's also a large component of that is having the community involved, also having a connection with more arts programming within our community as well.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognition of guests and visitors, maybe that was pretty much them. So up next, we have item four, our reports, we have World's Best Workforce Presentation. From our two businesses.
Thanks for having us. We're here to just share with you our annual World's Best Workforce Plan and requirement that MDE asks us to do annually, yearly. And as you know, World's Best Workforce has some goals that we worked on last year, and we're going to share those results with you and then share upcoming plan with you. This, next year, what MDE did was that all students are ready for school, so there's four goals. We have all students are ready for school, all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed, all students are career and college ready for graduation, and then all students graduate from high school. So we'll be going off of those four goals this year and sharing with you our results. So.
She was going to get the.
The power point up.
Power points up. Start to move away.
So just to share with you, so that kindergarten readiness goal, we had an increase, wanting to increase of 5% in different foundational skills, letter names, letter sounds, concepts of print, and onset sounds. And we actually surpassed that goal, and we went letter sounds increased from 12% to 48%. And so this is checking our kindergarten students and how they're doing. The letter names increased from 27% to 57%. Concepts of print, and that's the beginning of the book, the end of the book, put your finger on a first word, last word type of skills. That increased from 8% to 86%. And our onset sounds increased, and those are beginning sounds, give me the sound that cat makes, that initial sound. And that increased from 2% to 77%. So we surpassed all the goals in that area. And what we used last year was our STAR early literacy, we don't have that assessment anymore, this year we're jumping to fast bridge. And so what we're looking at this year as a goal is that right now we have 2% of our kindergarteners that are meeting the end of your benchmark, which is 41 letter sounds in a minute. So we give them, we time them for a minute, how many sounds can you read, which helps build fluency. And our goal, looking at our students, is that if, right now we have 2%, we're hoping at the end of the year we get to 69%. So we looked at, based on some screening reports, that that is a reasonable goal that we think that we can make. So some of the things that we're working on to support that is that we did get our Wordwork Sunday program, and that is also in Oregon-Gillingham, we started that mid-year last year, we saw some great results, so we're going to stick with that. Another program that we got was Hegarty Ethenemic Awareness, which is all foundational skills, rhyming, syllables. We will continue to use our FastBridge, which is a great tool to share with us interventions that we can use with students, and then progress monitor those students. And so if students aren't making progress, then we'll make some adaptations for that and give them some additional support. And the other thing is, this is our third year of building social emotional skills using our Second Step program, and we've found some great success with that. So that will be our kindergarten readiness goal for next year, for this year. Our next one, if you go back to the other one, just to share with you, last year MDE has a third grade literacy goal. They're doing away with the third grade literacy goal, and we have a Read Act, it's called. So before, we were getting kids ready by third grade, well now we know that all students need to be ready to read K through 12. So they're initiating a new act, and we'll learn more about that in the upcoming year. But just to share with you, I did want to share that we did reach this goal for last year. We were hoping that from 44% of our students to 55% of our students would increase in our literacy benchmark, and we actually had 69%. So I think, again, celebrating that success and looking at that growth over time, so that is amazing. So then moving on to this achievement gap reduction goal, looking at, we have a reading goal and a math goal. Our math goal, if you go back to the reading goal.
I'm sorry?
Yep. So we were hoping that our third through eighth grade and 10th grade students would increase from 40.6% to 50%. And if you look at all of our students, we went from 40.6% and we decreased to 38%. We also looked at trying to reduce that gap between our free and reduced students and our special ed students, and we were hoping to do that, and that would be an increase of 5%. And we actually did go down in our free and reduced and our special ed. So we did not meet that achievement gap goal for last year. Going on to our math goal, we were hoping to go from 28% to 40%. Using, again, it's our North Star and MCA, and as you know, MCA is a one, one day, one test that doesn't tell us as much as we would hope that it does, and not all of our students take that test. And so we were hoping that we would increase by 5% with our free and reduced and special ed. And we did, for all students, we did go up in that area, and for our free and reduced, we also went up in the area. Special ed, we remained about the same for that.
The interesting thing about the free and reduced population for 7th grade and 11th grade in this area, it was actually higher than our rest of the rest of the students, than our total schools together. So there were two grade levels where our free and reduced students outperformed the school. Why don't they all take the MCA test?
Some parents can opt their students out, so not if they sign off that they don't want their child to take it, then they don't take it, but then we're docked for that.
Every student that doesn't take it is considered a zero, I mean, it's.
And we're required to notify them that they have that option.
And one question that I had asked during the meeting that we had was if you have a child that's in a higher level math, do they get a test that matches them, and the MCA does not, it's an overall 11th grade? So if you've got a child that's in a higher math, where they're in class with ninth, 10th graders, they're actually going to take a test that they got to think backwards on, which can be harder too.
So what we're moving forward with is we are going to focus on a math goal. And we're going to use FastBridge, FastBridge and STAR math assessment, because what it's doing is going to show us growth over time for the year. So if you look at this, right now, we have 30% of our all 3rd through 8th and 11th graders that are meeting that benchmark target. By the end of the year, we would like to see 60% of those students, so we're going to see that grow throughout the year. We're looking at our free and, our special ed students, so 11% are passing or meeting benchmark right now, that we hope to increase that by 17%. And then our free and reduced, we're at 25% meeting, and we are going to work on getting 50% of our students to meet that end of the year benchmark. And so, again, as we talked about with MCA's, that really measures your curriculum and what you're working on. This shows growth throughout the year, growth over time, where they're starting it and putting in those intervention supports so that we will see an increase by the end of the year. And you're comparing apples to apples, and our same students are getting that same test. So how we're going to go about achieving those goals are, we are going to continue our standards-based instruction aligned to the Minnesota State standards. We are looking at our STAR FastBridge testing tool, determining interventions and then progress monitoring weekly. And if students aren't making progress, again, we look at how we can support them differently. Do we need to put more intervention time in? So we're really attacking and looking at that data on a weekly, bi-weekly basis in our data meetings that we hold. We've already had Russ Davidson come in and work with our teachers, each of the grade levels, to be able to look at our standards, look at the assessments, create mapping. And so we're spending a lot of time on staff development, professional development for our teachers in the area of math. So we're hoping that that also helps and supports our special ed students, who are trying to help close that achievement gap, that we're giving our special ed teachers all the supplemental materials that they need in order to support their students that they're working with, and then really working on that hands-on, concrete use of math concepts. So, again, trying to focus on one area because we have those supports in place. Reading with the state is really in an influx right now, and that's why we're not going to focus on that. We're waiting for January for them to tell us if we're using the appropriate curriculum, and if we're not, then we're going to have to revamp that as well. So we're in kind of a stalemate until the state tells us what they want us to do with that, so.
And one good thing is that Russ Davidson came and looked at our current curriculum and helped us map out where the benchmarks are in that curriculum, so that the teachers could just follow along the plan that he has made, and it makes a lot of sense. College and Career Readiness, so this, College and Career Readiness involves a lot of different things, and we'll talk about those in the plan. But it was 11th, grade 11 who meet the enrollment, so we use the 8th and 11th grade math to do this, for this part of it, I should say. So 8th grade math, we want to increase the amount that meets or exceeds the MCA's. And we went from 7.3 and 21, 22 to 21.7. So we have gone up in that area in 8th grade. 11th grade went down a slight bit, went down by 8.8%. But we would really like to see those numbers a lot higher than that, obviously. We want to show growth, which was awesome, but we also want them to be closer to state average or above. 23, 24 goals, we're going to continue with that goal. 8th graders to meet the or exceed, we want to go up by 5%, so going from 21. whatever it was, up 5% from there. And same with 11th graders, it's 8th grade and 11th grade, because that's 8th grade, they stopped taking the MCA math until 11th grade, then they take it again in 11th grade. It's kind of, and we talked about that, it's kind of similar to what you said, there's three years of math that they're being tested on in 11th grade. They do that with science also, so it's in 8th grade, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade science. Our 6th grader is going to remember, or 8th grader is going to remember what I did in 6th grade. It's pretty tough, so it's, those are difficult ones. Strategies that we're going to use, so these are, this is more for the whole area of college and career readiness. So there's the academic, the math portion, and this is the other portion that we're working on. So we are trying to create more work-based credit programs and community connections for experience. We're doing that through the Pathways Program and our academies, whatever we're going to call it, we're still debating that. And using community businesses, co-ops for career planning, we are already making partnerships with Twist Drill and some other places over in Hitting, college and career fairs. We send our kids to college and career fairs in Hitting, there's also some in Virginia. College in the schools, by the way, that's changed to CIS now, college in schools, don't miss me one. Classes offered for college credits, we are increasing that also. We have a new CNA course that was offered through kind of Hitting Community College. Then they sent an instructor over, now we have an instructor of our own, Sarah Burst, our nurse is qualified to do that, worked with Kathy from the college, I can't think of her last name right now, to do that. And so we will be offering that this spring, actually. So there's going to be some kids from Chisholm working in that program. Hoping to get them on into the community, following those people around in those areas. And wrap us up to readiness curriculum, which goes 7th through 12th, showing what's going to happen after high school, not just if you're going to college, but what other types of programs are.
Aren't you sharing the schedule too with Mrs. Burst on the CNA class too, because it's a big advantage with her being here every day.
Yep.
Versus, or I can explain it to her, it's a big advantage that. We used to hold it basically a morning block for two hours.
Right.
But they could done like late November, maybe early December, and what do we do with the kids when they're done until the semester break? She's able to teach it for one hour a day for the whole semester, which is, it just makes it so much easier. So we're not going to have a huge class in the spring, but we'll get a start time, hopefully she'll build the program. So that worked out really nice with all the master level credits that she has. Kids can get college credit, we have it in-house now versus, and when college come over, it's just so much more efficient. That you got that going.
Yeah, we worked out the minutes that had been, when the units had worked on, and we can do it in one hour, which was very nice. And we can choose the hour, instead of it having to be the first and second hour. It's going to end up being the fourth hour, because a lot of the people that are in that class have studied all four hours.
And I do want to mention, Hitting College has been really incredibly flexible with us on this too. Because we did have an agreement that was going to cost us a little bit more money, but this will save us a little bit of money. But they've been super flexible, so just want to make sure I recognize that publicly too. They've been really flexible with us on that, so.
Graduation rate, this is a three-year, three-year graduation rate, so the average of three years. And the problem with that is that they don't have last years coming out until February. So this is actually on the year before, so we're really talking about 2021 graduation and 2022 graduation. Next year, we'll get to them, it's always going to be a year behind. And it's difficult to estimate graduation percentage because you have kids switching schools all the time, did they graduate on time? Kids going to different types of programs, whether it's online, did they graduate? The state has to get all that information and then get us our graduation rate. So for the 22, 23 goal, we had 21, we had 77.1% of our seniors graduated. The following year, in 22, we had 90.2. So obviously, there was a big increase, and again, that's a three-year average, so the three-year average went way up. Of course, the 77.1 was the COVID years that were not so hot. Moving forward, we are hoping, we have 50 current seniors, we're hoping to move that up from 90.2 to 91.2. Once you get in the 90s, it's pretty tough to move around, it's easy to go down, it's hard to go up. So we're going to try to increase it by 1%, working with the NLC for credit recovery, they have actually been, I shouldn't have said actually. They have been very good this year with getting our kids into the program. They do two different types of credit recovery, one is onsite, and one is kind of a distance learning model, where they go there once a week to get materials, you know, check in with their teacher, and then go on on their own. And we've already gotten several kids in that this year who are way behind on credits, and they're hoping to catch up and graduate with their class. Early intervention, looking at 10th graders, you know, and 9th graders that are behind already, and trying to figure out ways to get them caught up, using night school, summer school, and tutoring.
How does the graduation rate, like how is that percentage affected when, let's say, graduation comes and that kid then does the credit recovery over the summer, maybe even into this school year, does that belong to like?
Select.
What year would that kid?
So that would help us, that would hurt us if it goes after, I believe, June 30th.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would hurt us.
Okay.
Or a major percentage.
There are opportunities for the kids to do that, if they're down, you know, a couple credits, they usually walk the stage. They have that first section of summer school and are done by June 30th.
Yeah.
That may be good, if they go past that, then it does hurt us.
We got to submit everything by a certain date, and that's through our Mars or our school and whatnot, so.
And that is all for open. Any questions?
I just want to say, I, this sounds great, exciting to see our numbers going up, and I hope that they will. And just kudos to you guys, the staff, and the teachers, to learn the new curriculums and to get it to the students. It's, I think everybody's working really hard for the same goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, and Mrs. Winter, Mr. Hager put a lot of time into this plan, along with Mrs. Allen, Mrs. Albert too, they put a lot of time in. We spend this question Tuesdays, but they've spent a lot of time to get on that too. We meet every Tuesday at 1:30, so I just want to make sure. This is Albert, and this is Allen also, they put some time into this too, along with the president.
Does any of the information get disseminated off to the students? Maybe not so much at the K through 6 level, but 7th, 12th. Do the kids receive any of this information? They're, well, if you're talking MCA's, they do get the information from their math teacher, their reading teacher, plus they get it sent home once the official comes up, so their parents get it. The teachers can look at kind of a preliminary score for them almost instantaneously, so they can tell. The thing that we need to work on is. You know, 7th through 12th, 7th and 8th graders pretty much try. Once a kid to the upper grades, getting them to take stock in it, making sure that they, you know, internalize this, this is important. It's something that the state thinks is important, so we need to take it seriously. So we're working on that with our teachers in those specific areas, trying to get them, you know, excited, trying to figure out some reward system for those who put the effort in, it's, yeah, there's.
M and Ms just don't cut it anymore.
No.
And by 11th grade, they're tested, they've probably taken their college tests, and so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little bit trickier to motivate at, yeah, that level, so.
Are there a lot, I mean, are there a lot of kids that opt out, or is there, is there any way, is it allowed to incentivize taking it, like extra credit, right?
You can't, no, you can't, we have called at high school, I can't speak for them, in more past, we called the parents and. Yeah. We have called, just kind of checked.
Please.
Some of them, yeah, I mean, and some of them for good reason, it causes a lot of anxiety, we try to let them know this doesn't matter, doesn't count against you. But it's, you know, for good reason too, but we do, we don't, I don't think we get a lot, I don't want to speak for K-6, because I haven't been, but in the past few years at the high school, even our 7th and 8th graders don't buy into it sometimes, not all of them, a lot of them do, but there's quite a few that don't.
Do they have to get their parents' permission to opt out?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's good.
They don't need their parents' permission just to.
Get done in five minutes.
Click, click, click.
Well, yeah, I might get that.
5% is better than zero.
So what you're saying is that it could be a very skewed test.
Yeah, that's why we really wanted to look at growth over the year and what they're really working on that year and focus on that. And, you know, we have students that come in really low, and they make more growth than a typical child does, and that's kudos to our teachers and kids working really hard at it, so I think that needs to be recognized too, that they showed amazing growth over a year.
Well, I think those tools are really nice.
For our benchmarks.
And I think seeing some of the excitement, you know, going on around here now, you know, it just seems like we're moving forward, we have a lot of things in line. I, maybe this will all rub off. I, maybe this will all rub off on the students, you know.
It's gonna take a few years.
It will, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more.
Ryan, are you leaving?
Do you want to stay?
Yep, just for a minute. Not, it's not very long, I just, we just, on that one pop, couple passes, we just gotta.
Yep, no problem.
Alright. You don't have to stay any longer than that.
Moving on, item number five, approving the agenda, are there any additions, fractions?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by.
All support.
By Simon, support by Raha, any other discussion or any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six, approving the consent agenda, these are the minutes of the November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. Accounts payable for the month of November two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of one million ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. Payrolls for the month of November two thousand and twenty-three is the amount of six hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. And to motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by your, on the side. Support by Lappy. Any discussion? None? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, personnel. Motion to accept the resignation from Lawrence Furman Ansey, Level Two Football Coach, effective November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. All motion approval. Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Support by Director Rice, any discussion? I'd like to thank Lurie for all this time, as I'm doing some traveling next fall, I guess, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight, administrative business. Item A, motion to approve the world's best workforce report. We just heard a presentation given by our superintendents, or I'm sorry, our principals. With input from our superintendent, how's that, how's that better?
I thought it was replaced already. That makes me come here.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Director on the side.
All support.
Support by Director Crowdy Simon, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, motion to set a date for a special meeting to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit financial report. This will be presented by Sterling and Associates. Uh, obviously we are not scheduled for another meeting until January, so it'll be up to the board. As to when they can meet to, uh, hear this financial report.
And does this have to be done before the end of the year?
Should be, yes.
Okay, are they ready to look at that? Just, are they ready for that whatever, okay.
They would be next week if we do a seven day, we'll look at that later next week. Um, I know Hibbing had talked about doing theirs in the morning and possibly us doing the same day, I don't know, it's, I don't, we don't have to do that.
Do you know what date they were looking at?
Alex, are you, uh?
Yep.
What day is it, is Hibbing doing theirs, is Sterling doing, uh, the audit presentation to the board?
We're doing it on, and I'm sorry, I should have gotten back to us, but we're doing it on the twenty-first, and then we had talked about doing the same for Chisholm, but she said something came up then. She wanted me to ask if, if, and I'm sure not the desire, but if, if we could do it like after Christmas, twenty-seventh or.
No, that's.
Yeah, twenty-seventh, twenty-two?
I think she said the, the seventh, yes.
Yeah.
They wanna do the twenty-seventh, is that what I thought?
Morning, afternoon?
Um, probably the morning from our side, but if it doesn't work for the.
I prefer morning too, I can be available anytime after eight.
I'm good, whatever, whenever, I'm, I'm good whenever.
I am.
So, nine, thirty-nine?
Nine AM on the twenty-seventh?
Nine AM.
That work for you Jackie?
Yeah, that's right.
Who's making that motion?
I'll make a motion.
All support.
Motion by Director Lappy to hold the. Financial report meeting on December twenty-seventh at nine AM, is that what we said?
Yep.
Yeah. That motion was made by Director Lappy, supported by.
Raha.
Hmm, Director Raha, any other discussion? All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And Alex, you'll let them know that?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Okay. Item C, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Independent School District six ninety-five and the licensed, and its licensed teachers to waive the requirements for the staff development contained Minnesota Statute one twenty-two, eight point six one, as presented.
Make a motion.
Motion by, by Simon.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's just, uh, part of the negotiations, the last round of the teachers, uh, maybe it's staff development, money not used, uh, with gold with the school, uh, general fund. We have to, by law, we have to approve this yearly, so we would have to do it again next year, so.
Any other discussion? None, all those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, motion to approve the facility use agreement through St. Louis County Sheriff Department to use the Von Stephens Room School for crisis training on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. All motion approval. Motion by Director Raha.
Support.
Support by Director Rodas Soder.
I think I, oh, I think I sent an email, let everybody kinda know what's going on, so we'll, when we get a little closer, we'll make sure that, they'll have signs up and whatnot, so that people don't go into a panic. Um, it's on an update, um, but they've been very helpful to us in the past, when we've asked for help from them, along with Chisholm PD, we don't look, look St. Louis County as much, of course, but we've asked them a handful of times, they've come and helped us at the high school, um, and been super helpful, so it's kinda nice that we can turn the favor, so.
All those in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, resolution number twenty-three dash twelve dash eleven. Resolution to accepting donations, and I will briefly go down these because they do deserve some recognition. Uh, accepting donation of mittens from Rosie Moreno to support the Von Stephens Room School. Accepting a three thousand dollar donation from the Chisholm Community Foundation to support the first robotics competition. Accepting a fourteen hundred dollar donation from the Chisholm Community Foundation to support the pre-lap timing system for athletes. Accepting two thousand dollar donation from the quarterback club to support the huddle subscription. Accepting two thousand dollars from the Boys and Girls Hoop Club to support the huddle subscription. Accepting a hundred and eighty dollars from Stanley Kaburka to support the milk program at the Von Stephens Room School. Accepting twenty-six hundred dollars of Blue Street gear from North Country Chevrolet GMC. And resolution, accepting donation of winter clothing from Sidelines. Accepting two hundred dollar donation from Snickers to support student support services. Accepting fifty dollars from Northwoods Lottery to support the student support services. Accepting a hundred and fifty dollars from the American Legion to support student support services. Accepting twenty-five dollars from Mary's Lake Street Floral to support student support services. Accepting three hundred dollars from the Nelson Family Cotton Candy to support student support services. And accepting one hundred and fifty dollars from personal donations to support student support services. And I entertain a motion to accept all those resolutions.
Who make a motion?
Support.
Motion by Crowdy Simon, support by Director Lappy, any other discussion? Like to thank all of those final community members. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Uh, Lappy, yes. Raha?
Yes.
Um, Rice?
Yes.
Crowdy Simon?
Yes.
Brandon Sutter, yes. Um, Orchard, please.
Yes.
I like my chi chi.
Motion carries, and, and again, we're, um, thanking all of those people supporting our, our school, our kids, and mostly our kids. And their athletics and, uh, various other portions of my school this year. Items five, items F, G, H, I, J, and K, we will accept as one motion. This is the second reading of policies, I will go through the policy number and its, um, heading. Item F, policy number five oh one, school weapons. Item G, policy number five oh two, search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, and students' person. Item H, policy five oh four, student dress and appearance. Item I, policy five oh five, distribution of non-school sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees. Item J, policy number five oh eight, extended school year for certain students with individualized education programs. And item K, policy number five ten, school activities. Can I entertain a motion?
Okay.
Motion by Director Crowdy Simon?
Support.
Support by Director Rice, any discussion?
Yeah, we just have a couple questions, Shelley and I went over these about the dress. One, now, we didn't see anything about hats, are, the old policy said no hats, are we like taking that out, is that? Or we're not, I mean.
That's a board decision, I've been in several schools where they wear hats, um, this is probably one of the last schools.
Well, and I guess I wanna know what your opinion, for me personally, I'm old school, I say, you don't have to wear a hat in school. But it's not up to me, it's up to you guys, what you think is best. Honestly, I, I just always have the like belief that it matters versus everything else, I mean, but I go along with, I mean, I realize times are changing, I understand that, so I don't wanna, you know, be like the old ladies, you know what?
Suck it, no.
I know it.
I, I would venture an opinion, I would venture an opinion, say you can wear a hat to school. As soon as you go in the classroom, it comes off because it's a distraction, that's the way I look at it. And depending on, I don't care if it's a Minnesota Twins hat, I don't care if it's, you know, A C D C, it's a distraction to everybody else, so that's just my opinion.
Yeah, see, we have the same, we're old school.
Right.
That's why I wanted you to stay, because we need new school, we need to know what is appropriate.
Be honest, it's not that big of a hassle for us, there's, you know, a few kids constantly, um, most kids are doing what we're asking them to do.
Okay.
Um, so ultimately, it's, it's up to the board, um, we will, whatever policy you want. Again, we are one of the last schools to, you know, have a hat, non-hat, I should say, policy, um. It's, again, there's.
Well, it take, it definitely would take away from, you know, because I know at one time it was a lot, all of a sudden they started wearing the, the red, the do-rags, the, you know, and then it became a problem and, you know, so.
And I'm not gonna speak for the teachers, but I believe that they would like to maintain the hat policy.
Okay, that's kind of what we were, we were thinking, that, you know, why, why is it so, it wouldn't be so wrong for us to maintain it, okay.
I know.
Okay, so that, and then one other one about, we talked about this, about the dress, the school dances. You know, we have this dress code, but at a school dance, does the dress code just go out the window? I don't know, but that's another thing, is like, do we put something in the policy of just be aware that there is a poli, a dress policy? And it does affect school dances as well? I mean, I.
No styles change over the years, ours were huge hoop skirts and.
Yeah. And some, and at one point they were just all real low cut, now they're very short, and I understand that that is the way that they're dressed, so I'm not saying.
It's a policy.
That I'm gonna go to the school measures, measure that dress, because no, I don't want no part of that. But I'm just saying, is there like a way we can, we don't have to put it in the policy, but is there like a way we can remind kids, like put it in the student handbook? Now remember, when shopping for your savings or your progress.
And also go into the, the paperwork they have to fill out to go to the dance, um.
Yeah.
And keep it tasteful.
Just a reminder.
I think, I think that would be probably more appropriate, just as a reminder.
Right, that's kinda what we, yeah, so, but I just wanted to bring it up to you guys.
Remember, you have to work.
Remem, yeah, remember to put your.
Now, is it gonna be questioned though, because like the last dance was at the Discovery Center, you know, it's still a school event.
It's still a school event.
It's still a school event, yeah, so.
And like you said, you can't send kids home because of it.
No, maybe it's a nice reminder, we're out here, but.
Well, you know, with that, that said too, you know, we have the issue of just day-to-day wear. Um, and that becomes very problematic at times, and.
Yeah, and I just don't, I, I don't feel.
It's difficult to enforce.
Keep the dance in the.
Because obviously teachers and, you know, principals, the superintendents, and parents and what have you. Um, a lot of times are very uncomfortable in trying to enforce that.
Well, and it is, cause I know, being at the school for all those years, there were plenty of times between me, Rachel, and Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Scott was usually the boss. But, I mean, we would call the kids, you know, into the, hey, here, you gotta put your sweatshirt on or you gotta go home, you know.
We also need to talk to the, the people that make the clothing, because as a parent with two daughters, they're all these crop tops are getting to be a little ridiculous. And when you tell your child to put a tank top underneath, it's not cool.
But, so anyway, okay, so that is kind of where we were at, so.
And I thi, I think, um, if our principals, maybe it's not as prevalent at the K through six level, but, um, feel comfortable, I think I'm comfortable way of enforcing it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm okay, yeah, I'm a merry-tor.
Has to be the bad guy.
And you know, most, ninety-nine percent of the students that get called in are fine with it. I mean, but it's that one percent, just like wearing a hat, it's that one percent that, you know, which I understand, so.
And they have plenty of shirts and sweatshirts that we can offer them.
I used to opt from off the auditorium, uh.
We do.
Rack, here you go, here's a stoop that Mr. Bull wore in nineteen.
Retro vest.
But yeah, so that's, yeah.
Whatever happened to jeans?
Jeans, wait, that's cold.
You don't wanna get.
Exactly, they, they know.
You know, and the thing is, they can sit, from hats to crop tops to shirt skirts to, um, boys wearing jeans that are showing their.
Their unnecks.
Their unnecks too, I don't know if that's a style anymore or not. Um, if Mr. Hake is comfortable having an enforcer. You know, and their policies, policies are being changed.
Policies are, but they're made to be followed, and that has always been my big thing, there's a policy for a reason, and we don't actually make, we just follow guidelines from M S B A that tells us what should be in the policy. But having a policy sure does make it easier when you're discussing, it's in writing, it's right here, I mean, and so, but a policy is no good if it's not followed.
No, I agree, absolutely.
And that's just how I truly believe, I just believe things run so much smoother if you just follow the policy. I know everything isn't black and white, I understand that, but if you follow a policy, I think it saves you and it saves the kid, you know. Okay.
We do have a motion in a second on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor, signified by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, you can go home now.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hake, getting along with Miss Winter. Uh, item nine, uh, under discussion, I suppose we could set our organizational meeting. It's supposed to be the first Monday or the closest, they're reasonably closest there to, in January. First Monday, I think is New Year's Day or New Year's Eve.
Yeah, but our school board meeting would be the eighth.
So, uh, I, I think we are well within our rights to hold the organizational meeting before, after, probably before.
I think that's what we usually.
Okay, so normally, it's the first meeting in January.
Yeah.
Okay. So that will be January eighth.
At like four?
No, I think it's just during the.
Oh, during the meeting?
Yeah.
We start this at five and.
Yeah, we'll start the meeting at five and include that in our regular plethora of items that we have to take care of and date. Start thinking about, um, where you'd like to be, kiddies, board chairs.
Boarda.
Board chairs. Things like that. Okay, item ten.
Mark, can I, um, just real quick, I just wanted to, a couple of things. At the last meeting, we talked about having, um, Don Kosky come in and talk on behalf of early childhood. And I reached out to her and she said, after the holidays, she's more than welcome to come. And the last thing is, um, putting on my partial keywana hat, we had our Holly Jolly event last Thursday at the Von. And I just wanna say a big thank you to Carla and to the custodial staff and the kitchen staff, because they did an amazing job. So it was a real big success, so just a little kudos out there.
Good, thank you. I agree, it was a big success. Anything else? Item ten, enrollment numbers, you have those before you?
Yeah, yes.
Well, item.
For the community members that are watching and everybody here, this Thursday is like the city of Chisholm. So it's our big event in Chisholm, like the city, this Thursday.
Oh, no, that's amazing.
Yeah, and then there's gonna be llamas and all kinds of condoms.
There's gonna be llamas.
The llamas.
I'm not gonna miss it.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, the regular meeting.
Okay.
Support.
Motion by Director Rice, support by Director Raha. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned at five fifty-three PM. Uh, we do have our truth and taxation meeting that will start at.
I can't wait.